All right, let's do this. Good morning, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and convene this meeting of the Temecula City Council Budget Workshop. Madam City Clerk, let the record reflect that all city council members are in attendance. Let's go ahead and start off our meeting with a flag salute. Commissioner Swank, would you go ahead and lead us in the flag salute?
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You can be seated. We'll move to the public comment portion of our meeting. Madam City Clerk, do we have public comments?
We do, Mr. Mayor. We have one speaker under general public comments and one under city council business. Under public comments general is Eamon McDonald.
Okay. Good morning, sir. Thank you for being here this morning.
My name's Eamon McDonald, and I had a meeting with Jeff Comicero some time ago, and he told me I could come up here and recite poetry, but I don't think I'll be doing that today. I'm not really good at public speaking, so I'll try my best to get through this. I did some investigation in the Temecula Valley Balloon and Wine Festival to do with local businesses and how much money they give back and how much money they collected. And I put together a website. It's called temeculacharities.com, and all the information that I'm about to tell you is on that website. On their tax returns that their lawyer was so kind to send me from 2010 to 2014, they did approximately $7 million in gross revenue, received $872,000 in donations, and approximately $278,000 from the city and the county of Temecula and Riverside County. They spent approximately $688,000 over those four years on employees and $828,000 on advertising. According to their own tax returns, they give zero money back to all charities. On a previous meeting at the council, they said they'd give to one charity in Temecula and several in Marietta. And when I looked into the charity in Temecula they give to, last year they gave them $750. I thought it was a little outrageous, needless to say. On their budget that they submitted to you guys, as in the city, to get more money, they maintained that they would take in over $1.6 million. And at the end of paying out all their expenses, they would have approximately $65,000 left. However, according to their own tax returns, at the end of 2014, they had $1,501,000 in their bank account, according to their tax returns that they filed with Uncle Sam. On their website, they list that they give to 11 charities. However, on the paperwork they submitted to the Temecula to receive money, they listed that they had 23 charities they give to, which was kind of interesting. They stated they give back to schools, which is not exactly true, as they require the kids to assist in parking cars and picking up trash. The same for the local servicemen and women that they get to come help. They donate money back to them, but they're donating it relative to hiring people to actually do the job. So that's not really donating to a charity. When I asked them and their lawyer for a list of charities they actually give to that were not listed on their tax returns for 2010, 2014, he responded that that would take a couple of months to put together that information, which I find it kind of ironic because if you actually look at the tax returns, it's for the promotion of educational and charitable organization, along with building Temecula for wineries and ballooning. So for the main, one of the, some of the main causes is actually listed on their tax returns, they're not actually giving to the charities. When it comes to vendors, their number one vendor, my understanding is Budweiser. They're a $39 billion company. They don't need any support, I'm pretty sure. The local wineries, my understanding is there was only three or four of them at the wine festival this year. Several other wineries were from out of town. So the thought of, it's always the same set wineries, it seems to be, that are in town. I went out and I talked to several wineries, and you probably wouldn't like the answers that they had. My advice is that the city council finds out what the actual wineries in the town think of the Temecula Valley Balloon and Wine Festival might be important. A local brewery in town wanted to go when they were told they couldn't because Budweiser was there. Yet in all, their claim to fame is that we're getting money from the city and the county because we're supporting local businesses. Scott Vinton, in a previous meeting, requested Mr. Comicero $15,000 for new flags because they were faded. And Mr. Comicero said, "Well, don't you guys have money of your own?" And he agreed. So it was as simple as asking, and hopefully I'll get $15,000 handed to me, and if they say no, well then I don't get it, I guess. He probably neglected to say he had $1 million in his bank account. My suggestion is that every charity that needs money or in-kind support should be audited every year to find out if they truly need it, as opposed to willy-nilly and out the taxpayers' money. I've been in business in this town for 30 years, and I've paid in easily $4 million in taxes. And when I met with their lawyer, who tried to tell me, "Well, only a few dollars of my money probably ever went to them," relative to the $4 million I paid. I also hired hundreds of people for the last 30 years, not four. So I speak here as a guy that's paid in my fair share of dues to Uncle Sam and for everybody sitting here, too, because I've been in business since I was 20 years old. If every business in this town got $70,000 from the city and the county, and they got $500,000 in-kind support, y'all wouldn't be sitting here because nobody would have actually paid taxes, which doesn't make any sense to me because it's really a business. Charities typically give back to charities. Why am I doing this when my tax dollars pay everybody to do their jobs? I am held accountable to pay taxes. Why are the guys not being held accountable by all of you to receive free tax dollars based on knowing doing an audit? Give my tax dollars to people that need it, is all I'm requesting. It is not my responsibility for the citizens of this town to ensure that Temecula Valley Balloon and Wine Festival is successful. They have liquid cash of $1 million in the bank and putting their hand out for more. I think enough's enough. I do not believe I've made friends over all of this, especially political ones. I'm also not voting for Bernie Sanders, you'll be up, you don't know. Thank you for hearing what I had to say, guys.
Thank you. I think Mayor Pro Tim Edwards had a question.
Yes, thank you, sir. Actually, the meeting that was attended was a meeting of the Economic Development Subcommittee consisting of Councilmember Comicero and I. And between the two of us, we actually asked all of those same questions that you highlighted. We asked who the charities were, how much was given, and we were quite surprised to find out about the amounts. But we kind of knew the answers to the questions that we were asking, but we wanted those questions to be asked publicly and the answers to be given publicly. So we had some ideas about the answers when they were given, so I'm sure that's going to be a topic of conversation at today's meeting. So rest assured that we knew what was going on and the questions were asked because of that.
No, and I believe that, too. And Mr. Comicero asked me to come here, and I did. And I appreciate all of your patience in listening to what I had to say.
Yes, and thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys. Have a great day.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, any more speakers?
Not under general public comments.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll go to city council business. Review of the proposed fiscal year 2016 slash 2017 preliminary annual operating budget. Mr. City Manager, I'll turn this over to you. You can put it in whatever order you'd like.
Thank you.
Take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, as we discussed, we're gonna flip the order of these and start with the capital budget and then work our way into the annual operating budget. So we'll take Agenda Item 2 first. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The agenda for today will include an overview of the five-year CIP, introduction of our draft operating budget for fiscal year 2016-17, the TCSD operating budget, a discussion on five-year strategic planning, as well as an update on the Join the Conversation efforts. I think it is important to share that while we have successfully balanced the fiscal year 16-17 operating budget, and several areas of revenue are improving, we remain concerned about the fiscal outlook as we examine the five-year forecasted plan. As everyone knows, we have been discussing this fiscal concern for two years, and that is one of the great values with five-year planning and forecasts, as we are not just concerned with today, but rather four to five years from now. This is just good business and good planning. Twelve months ago, at the budget workshop right here, this city council directed me and the team to go into the community and begin discussions about fiscal priorities, fiscal challenges we see on the horizon, and community values. A city council subcommittee of council members Comicero and Ron also participated in this endeavor over the last 10 months. We have made considerable progress on this assignment, and will be prepared at the end of the workshop today to report out on the status of this community engagement process. We have examined our expenditures and cut where we deemed appropriate to match our expected revenue. We did this again with this budget, last year and every year prior. Over the last decade, the city has shown great restraint in managing expenditures that are within our control. We will touch on specific examples of how the city has grown by 11% over the past 10 years, yet reduced the number of benefited employees by 52 and 1/2 positions. We have elected to keep key positions vacant even within public safety, and we have managed to fund our reserves in a demonstration of fiscal prudence for times of economic uncertainty. We have entered into creative cost-sharing arrangements with other governmental entities and private sector, and also radically changed how new development is addressed by the city council, given future fiscal concerns and the ability to pay for a high level of service, all while continuing to provide needed services delivered in a high-quality fashion. These were strategic decisions, and we will continue to make recommendations that are strategic and in the best interest of this community. We have considered hypothetical ways to balance future-year budgets, yet they come with real sacrifices, effects that are seemingly contrary to what our community wants and what our community desires, based on the preliminary survey feedback. These budgets are built on priorities, and we remain committed to being a city of excellence and, as Mayor Nagart noted last year, avoid becoming a mediocre city. Before we launch into the budget workshop slides, I did want to share some of the current demographic information for the city, which plays a significant role in our local economy and our budget. As recently published from Nielsen Reports and the Southwest Riverside County Board of Realty, the following demographics have been provided. Our current population is just over 109,000, which is a slight 0.1% increase from 2015. The median age in years is 34 and 1/2 years. Number of households is just 34,559, and this is up 2% from the previous year. The average household income is now over $94,000. This is up 9 and 1/2% from last year.
Wow.
The April median home price in Temecula is $435,000, and this is also up 8% from April of this year, or last year. And the number of jobs is now at 50,493, up 2.4% from the previous year. And this is significant because we forecast that later this calendar year, we will surpass the highest number of jobs this city has ever experienced or recorded in the city's history. Also, the April unemployment rate for Temecula is trending encouragingly in the right direction. We're listed at 4.1%, and this is down from last year. And you can see, and compared to the county, is currently at 5.7%, and the state at 5.2 and the nation at 5%. The proposed fiscal year 16-17 operating budget and CIP has been drafted to be in line with the six core values of the city council adopted Quality of Life Master Plan from 2011. And after 27 years of cityhood, you will see budget allocations shifting from expansion of facilities and programs to a concentration on maintenance while still preserving the high quality of life we have all enjoyed. It is interesting to note that our city infrastructure was built largely on development revenue, yet the maintenance of such infrastructure and facilities is now the sole responsibility of the city, reliant on existing revenue sources. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Greg Butler, our Assistant City Manager, who will walk us through the proposed capital improvement program.
Thank you, Aaron. The Capital Improvement Program is a comprehensive planning document that will identify and prioritize major capital improvement projects over the next five years. A majority of those projects are funded with one-time revenues that are not recurring. So therefore, it's extremely important that we go through an extensive planning, or excuse me, appropriate level of effort to expend to maximize the efficiency and the effectiveness of these one-time dollars. Few highlights. There are 49 projects proposed in the CIP that are categorized in circulation projects. Those are the ones that identify are aimed at reducing traffic congestion, public facilities, parks, park projects, and a placeholder for available housing funds administered by SARDA or successor agency to the former RDA. There are approximately $485 million in project costs within the CIP. $352.9 million represents the cost to complete those projects. $132 and 1/2 million has been previously spent on the listed projects. But as you can see, we've identified $194.8 million in funded capital projects for the term of the five-year. $32.5 million will be appropriated in fiscal year 16-17, and that will be leveraged with $66.5 million carried over from previous years. As depicted in this table, nearly $300 million of the project costs are identified for circulation improvements. Again, those are the projects that aimed at reducing traffic congestion, representing 85% of the total CIP. There are 23 infrastructure projects identified, six park and recreation projects identified, and again, that placeholder for $12.4 million in redevelopment agency bond proceeds. We've identified five new projects that we're proposing to be included in the CIP this year. One of them will be a road improvement project on Inez, including the widening of the section from Rancho Vista Road to La Paz Street. This project is fully funded with development impact fees. A fiber optic communication system upgrade project will improve the coordination of signalized intersections along Winchester Road, Ranch California Road, and Temecula Parkway, our east-west corridors. That will improve communication with the Caltrans ramps at those same east-west corridors, and that project is funded with Highway Safety Improvement Grant. We also received a grant from WR COGS Beyond Program. We've leveraged that with some match monies, and we'll be able to install sidewalks on Sixth Street between Mercedes and the Senior Center. Also added this year is the phasing of a new teen center. We received a conceptual drawing earlier this year, and it includes a remodel and expansion of the current recreation center at Ronald Reagan Sports Park. The funding identified to begin that project will be available in fiscal year 16-17 based on projected parking, or excuse me, 17-18, based upon projected park and recreation development impact fees. Also added, yet no identical, you know, no identified funding is currently available, is the Public Safety Tribute Memorial envisioned to be placed on an existing park site or on proper, or on public property to honor our first responders. And this project was included at the request of Councilmember Ron. Some of the major traffic improvement projects include our Frantigal Parkway Interchange Project. As we all know, the project received a temporary setback earlier this year when the state eliminated $32 million in program funds for this project. There is sufficient funding to continue the design and acquisition of right-of-way for a reduced or subphased project approach that's been supported by Caltrans and RCTC. We're continuing to pursue replacement funding for the construction of that subphase. The design of the I-15 79 South Interchange Project is 100% complete. Construction funding has been secured with regional dollars, and this now represents a little over a $50 million fully-funded infrastructure project. We plan to be breaking ground on this critically important project before the end of this year. The design of the Pachanga Parkway widening, which is funded solely by the Pachanga Tribe as a result of our intergovernmental agreement, is underway and will provide necessary road improvements to support the expansion to their resort. Other notable circulation projects with respect to our streets, one of the highest priorities we can strive for is the proper maintenance of our roadways. Next year, we will invest $6 million. The pavement rehab program, which continues our ongoing investment in road network, includes $1.7 million in new Measure A funds, which will supplement approximately $4.3 million carried over from last year. Major projects for the coming year include the Overland Drive from Commerce Center to Jefferson, Temecula Parkway between Bedford Court and Pachanga Parkway, and Margarita Road between Rancho California Road and Temecula Parkway. Some of the other infrastructure projects that are included in the CIP, there are 23 projects with cost estimated, cost estimates totaling over $35 million. Notable projects include a parking lot expansion at the Ronald H. Roberts Public Library. This project is estimated at $2.9 million. We expect to be complete with the plans and specs and advertised for bids this October, and we're looking to break ground in January of next year. The Temecula Park Ride Project at the corner of La Paz and Temecula Parkway is currently under construction. We'll be implementing technology upgrades, including the installation of surveillance cameras at select city facilities, as well as the new fiber optic communication project I mentioned earlier. Nearly $1 million has been dedicated to sidewalk improvement citywide, as well as here in Old Town. As funds become available, the city continues to implement the bike lane and trail program throughout the city, which is part of the multi-use trails and bikeways master plan. As Aaron mentioned, as our cities, as our city facilities continue to age, an annual allocation of $250,000 will supplement prior-year carryover funds of nearly $115,000 to address annual facility maintenance costs. And finally, an update to the ADA Transition Plan with $250,000 programmed to analyze facilities and public right-of-way will be continued in the current CIP. Making our way to our parks projects, there are six park and recreation projects totaling nearly $6.2 million. Penny Pickles Workshop Exhibit and Enhancement Project, flood control channel repairs at our park sites, a citywide park improvement program funded at nearly $321,000, citywide playground in equipment and safety enhancements, $1 million will be available in the coming year, and the Sam Hicks Monument Park Playground Update, which includes a replica of the Pachanga Great Oak. It's being fabricated and is scheduled to be completed and installed by spring of 2017. This project is primarily funded with Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG dollars. It's important to note regarding the citywide playground equipment project, we issued an RFP earlier this year for selective playground maintenance and replacements with an eye toward being creative, yet affordable solutions. We're reviewing those proposals now. And finally, as I mentioned, there's a placeholder in the CIP that includes $12.5 million of affordable housing funds. It's important to note that these funds reflect the remaining bond proceeds issued by our former redevelopment agency. Late last year, the Department of Finance authorized the use of bond proceeds from the 2011 Tax Allocation Housing Bond, bringing this total now available to $12.5 million. An RFP for interested affordable housing developers closed on May 16th. Staff's begun to review those proposals. We anticipate sitting down with Supporting Housing Subcommittee in early summer to go over those. The next steps for the CIP, it will be presented tonight to the Public Traffic Safety Commission and is scheduled to be presented to the Planning Commission on June 1st and the Community Services Commission on June 13th. Formal adoption of the final CIP budget by the city council is slated for Tuesday, June the 14th. At this time, we are available to answer any questions you may have with respect to the proposed CIP.
Thank you. Councilmember Comicero.
Thanks. First, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that $12 million we talked about in the SARDA housing funds must be used on affordable housing.
That is correct.
We don't have any latitude there. It would be nice if we did, but we don't. Question, when we, particularly a road project, pick any roads, do we have a sense of what it takes to maintain, let's just say we spend $5 million building a road. How long before we're going to have to start maintaining that? These answers you may not have at the tip of your tongue, but, and what would that cost look like on an annual basis? And I'm going somewhere with this, but...
Sure. That's largely dependent on the design of the road. As the engineers get together with the geotechnical consultants and the design engineers, they ask us, okay, what lifecycle do you want to assign to this road? And you can invest more money upfront, say, your $5 million road project could become a $10 million road project, then you won't have to maintain it for a 20-year lifecycle. We typically target our street road life cycles between 10 and 20 years, depending on the subsurface conditions we encounter. I've been here now 17 years. The first project I did was the Overland Drive Bridge, and it did some work on Jefferson Avenue as it elevates and gets up towards that. That design of that road was a 20-year design life. So we're coming up on 20 years, and the road is showing signs of deterioration now. The surface pavement's starting to crack just a little bit.
But we still have to do slurry sealing and...
Correct. And that's exactly where I was gonna go. What you can do to prolong that life is you can do preventive maintenance through the use of slurry seals. You want to keep that water from intruding underneath the pavement. Crack seals, I know Tom and his team have requested a crack seal machine in our operating budget to help prolong the lifecycle. But then, once we get to a maintenance component or a maintenance road, as long as you do your preventive maintenance, we have a pavement management program that recommends to keep our streets at the status they're at, spending anywhere from $4 to $10 million annually on maintenance efforts, not just building roads, but maintenance efforts, citywide.
Yeah, what I was thinking, and I know, obviously, we have certain restrictions and regulations on what we do with capital dollars. Would it be considered legal in the capital budget to include in the cost several years' worth of maintenance down the road? For instance, if we have a million-dollar budget, could we make that a million, too, and then at the completion, put $200,000 in a fund that's dedicated to that road? And as we talk about one-time funding sources and then maintaining them with operating capital, is that a way we could smooth that issue?
Some of the funding restrictions are not allowed to be used for maintenance. We have very flex, very much flexible, we are very flexible with our own funding, our general funds. And a lot of, a lot of the projects you'll see at the bottom page of the sheet, there's an ongoing maintenance component that's added. We have not established, I'll call an asset management program, that sets aside money for the purpose that you're talking about, but we're recommending that we explore that and do something to that effect. So if it's funded with city funds, by all means, we could set aside a certain percentage of the funding for ongoing maintenance. But if it's built by federal funds or state grants, a lot of those monies cannot be used for maintenance.
Well, it's something that we should look at, I think, on every one of those projects to see what kind of flexibility we have. And if we can do that, it's probably a lot less painful to do it that way.
Yeah, no, to your point, we wholly agree. And in fact, in a perfect world, you would be building the road, and then every year thereafter, you'd be setting aside X amount of money to maintain that road in perpetuity. And so every year, you'd, and then when, in 10 years or 20 years, you would draw down on that asset fund and basically repair the road or the synthetic turf field or the facility. But that's where we'd like to go.
And I appreciate that, it's just something we obviously wish to be keeping on our radar screen. And just one other word on the teen center at $645,000 earmarked in 17 and 18. I know the way that's, the preliminary design, we've looked at essentially, it's probably 90% of it is a big building, and I don't think we could phase that. But one thing that I'd like us to look at as we talk about going into next year on the design, is there a way to bring the facility online sooner by possibly phasing the outdoor components first and possibly bringing programming, additional programming more so than we do now, into the existing rec center so that we could really hit the ground running and then just have the building left to complete? And in essence, we'd have an up-and-running center.
And when we issue the RFP for the design, we can certainly include a phasing component on recommended phases to bring it online sooner.
Great. Thank you.
Is that it, Mr. Comicero?
Yes, thank you.
I have one.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards.
Following along those lines, we also are aggressive in ensuring that when we build a road to the 20-year standard, that if we see a breakdown prior to that, and I know that we are responsible in doing core testing to make sure, we have gone back to our contractors, have we not, and had them come out to see if there was something through the construction process? Or have we gone back to contractors? Or if that were to occur, would we go back to contractors to see if there was something in their areas of responsibility?
Yeah, we do quality control testing as things are built. And in the event, I can, I'm familiar with one project where the oils and the makeup of the asphalt was not quite up to the specifications. We had them post additional maintenance bond so that they could move forward with any repairs should the road not last as long as it was...
So I wanted to make that clear, that we, through that process, we ensure that everything is done properly so that the city's not liable at the end or left holding the bag, so to speak.
Yes, we do.
And then also, as far as it being equitable citywide, if it appears that roadways are not standing up, or if we have an area of the city saying this part of the city is neglected and another part of the city seems to get all the attention, through our scheduling processes and through core sampling, we can show... through our scheduling processes and through core sampling, we can show that actually your road is holding up better than you think it is, and we can prove, we can prove that process.
We typically go through a comprehensive, what's called a pavement management system or evaluation, and it evaluates all the roadways, it gives us which ones should be prioritized so that they don't deteriorate into a state of disrepair that will become very costly. So that helps us prioritize where we should spend those maintenance dollars. And we refresh that report every seven to ten years.
Cause I know we've gotten emails from residents saying our road's in terrible shape, when really, it's not all that bad. The surface may have, we may have some surface cracks, at which point we know that it's due, or it happens to be due for a slurry on the top. But the, the base or the, the subsurface of the road is still intact and in great shape, so...
Yeah, there are some, some neighborhoods that could use some aesthetic, you know, treatment with slurry seal. Uh, we try to balance that with our rehabilitation efforts.
Right, and we can do that through the comprehensive testing and the measurements that we have, so there's a way to measure that.
Yeah, our pavement management system helps us prioritize.
Okay, just want to make that clear, so thank you.
I have one question, uh, Mr. Butler, on the, um, the road improvement for, uh, Yenez from Rancho to La Paz, uh, what is the timing?
We just introduced that project into the CIP. If the council moves forward with it, uh, they'll have to go through the effort of issuing an RFP. I would think you're probably looking at at least a year to eighteen months before you'll be actually seeing construction out there.
And, and, uh, have we set aside enough funds for it? Where are we at as far as financing?
Yes, it's fully funded, that is the example of what development impact fees are collected for.
And, uh, do you see primarily the expansion of that road? Is it, uh, equal on both sides and then restripped, or is it primarily, uh, one side and restripped? How do you see that happening?
You know, I'm not intimately familiar with where the footprint of the road sits relative to the right-of-way that's out there right now, but it's, would be designed to its circulation plan designation. My suspicion is it would be equal on both sides, but we'd have to look at the physical footprint.
And, and is the expansion to take it from a two-lane to a four-lane?
That is this general plan designation, yes.
Okay, great, thank you very much, Mr. City Man, oh, Councilmember McCracken.
Uh, yes, um, two items here. We mentioned the one H, uh, Roberts Library and the, uh, adding on the, the parking, that speaks to safety. Can you go in more detail on why we want to extend more parking, uh, on the safety aspect for those who don't know?
Absolutely, yeah, that is one of the highest used, or is the highest used library in Riverside County, it's been that way since it's opened. The parking lot as sits out there today is extremely full, uh, most of the time. So what we're going to do is introduce, um, Amir, I see in the audience, can you rattle off how many new parking stalls you're putting in? Okay, yeah, so we're gonna introduce about seventy-five more stalls. It'll be just down the hill a little bit from the existing parking, if you're familiar with where the library is. Yes, towards the sports park, yeah, down the hill. So you'll go out the end of the current parking lot, loop or do a hundred and eighty-degree turn and there'll be another parking garage down there. And then there will be a stairway access way to get you up, back up to the library from that place. Not a parking garage, not a parking structure, no, just surface parking right there. And we'll also take that opportunity to evaluate the circulation of the entrance and the book drop and make some this modifications there to eliminate the vehicular pedestrian conflicts in that area.
Yeah, I bring this up for those who are not aware, because this is one of the most busiest libraries it uses and becomes a safety thing for, for our residents, so that we do this, that's why we want to include this. And, uh, one more thing, we talked about the sidewalk, uh, projects coming up. A lot of the areas, we're, we're down in maintenance mode with the city, you know, and looking at things that, when the county had it, maybe should have done things differently, but we're kind of correcting those things now. As far as the, um, was that nice? Thank you, as far as the sidewalks go, is there a list of priorities or areas that need improvement before others that maybe the residents can be aware of?
Yes, there are. When we did the bike lane and trails master plan, one of those components that we added on to their scope of work was to evaluate circulation element streets that do not have fully improved sidewalk facilities. We've gone through that and with their help prioritized where those sidewalk improvements would be, and that's where we would start to check those off as we go down that list. Once that's finalized, we'll be able to publish that and put it online, people can see where the sidewalk needs are.
The other thing that drives, um, sidewalk prioritization is, is available funding. So if, um, in this case, we've, um, been fortunate to compete for some, some dollars that have a specific color to it that can only be used, um, you know, for, they're eligible for sidewalk, you know, here in Old Town or community development block grants and things of that nature. So those are, we're recommending those are good uses of those funds to connect the dots.
We, we talked about partnership with other outside agencies. Is there a way we could do this with, uh, other agencies with the sidewalk repair? Say a particular area, neighborhood, or...
We, we evaluate every funding opportunity that comes along. Two of them that are, um, used quite frequently for these type of improvements are, there's a federal and a state Safe Routes to School program. Those grants, um, evaluate different things. They, they want you to be very, very creative to get those funds. Just throwing a typical sidewalk project out there won't necessarily compete very well. But if we can identify an area that we could get a, perhaps a trail that's not necessarily on an adjacent to a street, uh, those compete very well, but we've been successful in the past in securing those Safe Routes to School grants to help implement sidewalk projects.
Thank you. Councilmember Ron.
Hi, um, thank you, I just have a couple of quick questions. On the, um, uh, Aaron, you mentioned the, uh, transition from more of a development city to a maintenance city, and I think that's a, that's a real important point to, uh, to highlight because that's, you know, from what I understand, going to be a larger economic driver from now on, uh, within our city. And then there's this sort of undertone of, of deferred maintenance, if you will, on, on certain projects, because it is an expensive endeavor. Um, and unexpected things do come up. But what I'm wondering is at some point, you know, deferred maintenance isn't, you know, i- is fairly typical for a lot of cities. But at some point, and I think we all know those cities where they've dug themselves into a deep enough hole, uh, no pun intended, but, you know, where they're just not able to get out. And even if, you know, additional revenues or something, uh, are secured in the future, they're always chasing that deferred maintenance. And so my question is, do we know what our threshold is so that we don't slip into that level of mediocrity? Um, and if we don't, is there a way of trying to figure that out?
Yeah, it's, it is a good question, it's one we've been talking about internally for, for quite some time. We have some ideas of what we should be investing in in terms of maintenance for streets and facilities annually. And I can tell you, it's a, a far cry from, from what you just saw. Um, at two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand a year for, for public facility maintenance, it probably should be on the order of two, two million a year, you know, set aside, somewhere in that range. We know things are getting older, and we know our community and our residents have enjoyed new, new things, new parks, new, um, and, and the level that they're kept at. So it is a concern. I think Temecula still has time to appropriately plan to not dig ourselves into that hole. But without new revenue or without significant cuts, we're not gonna be able to make those, you know, those, um, those deferred maintenance, uh, a priority, you know, in terms of asset management. Um, and that's one of our things in the five-year that we, we're gonna talk about later on, is, uh, something we need to be diligent about, for sure.
Okay, and then, uh, one other thing was the, um, uh, Public Safety Memorial, uh, that, that's on the, uh, plan. I know there's no dollar amount allocated, but one of the things I'd like to recommend, I was just up in Sacramento meeting with folks from, uh, law enforcement and fire. Um, and one of the things I was talking to them about is, you know, if they could help sort of get behind, uh, the development of something like this and that we work with them and private donors to be able to secure at least fifty percent of the cost of, uh, the memorial before the city, uh, commits any funds to that. You know, recognizing where we're going in the future, I think it's important that we, you know, work with, uh, donors and private partners as much as we can, wherever we can. So, um, I just keep that in, in mind and see if we can write that into it.
Sure, we'd be happy to work with you on that.
Thanks.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Councilmember Ron brings up a great point, and I had several discussions this week at ICSC about that exact thing. Cities reach a point where they are not experiencing growth anymore. And when you're not experiencing growth, you lose those opportunities for revenue from, from development. And we decided that, that one way around that is, when you have cities that are stagnant and, and at the extreme, let's talk about Detroit, or, you know, in fact, they're in decline and they're blighted. One way to avoid that is to, to constantly maintain so that you avoid that blight and then you cause development to want to tear down what's there and continue to reinvest in your city. So, you know, it's a vicious cycle, you need to maintain in order to, uh, continue that interest so that, that you avoid that blight. So maintenance is absolutely vital to the future health and growth of your city to keep people interested in constant, uh, redevelopment, you know, and continued investment in your city. So it's, uh, it's a circle, you know, you've got to continue that circle. So I think we're thinking about it the right way. And of course, the Jefferson Corridor is gonna be the exact example of that. And it was, people, it was very well received in Las Vegas.
Good.
I see nothing further, continue, Mr. City Man.
All right, all right, it's time, uh, we'd like to introduce, uh, Finance Director Jennifer Hennessy, she's gonna walk us through the, uh, annual operating budget.
Good morning. Okay, the General Fund, which serves as the primary operating fund for the city, is structurally balanced in fiscal year sixteen seventeen with revenues exceeding expenditures by two hundred and seventy thousand. Revenue is projected at sixty-nine point four million this year, which is flat compared to the prior year due to the receipt of a one-time large payment in the prior year related to the closeout of the state's sales tax triple flip financing mechanism. Absent this one-time adjustment, revenues are projected to grow at a rate of four point six percent over the prior year. Expenditures are projected at sixty-nine point one million, which is an increase of three point two million or four point eight percent over the prior year. And the rising costs of public safety, combined with higher CalPERS retirement costs, are the primary drivers of this increase. General Fund con, General Fund contributions of one point nine million reflect funding provided to various CIP projects as well as the Business Incubator Fund. The General Fund is projected to end the year with just under twenty-five point nine million dollars in fund balance. Per-city policy, reserves are fully funded with the Reserve for Economic Uncertainty funded at thirteen point eight million and the secondary reserve funded at just under three point five million. Eight hundred and forty-seven thousand is assigned for capital projects for the next fiscal year and three hundred and twelve thousand is being set aside for the Pachanga-funded police support, leaving a total available fund balance of seven point four million dollars. It's very important to note that this balance is available for one-time expenditures only as opposed to ongoing operations. The budget process started this year in January with the projection of revenue, which serves as the foundation for the development of the entire operating budget. To begin this process, staff analyzes each major revenue source, reviews economic trends, trends, and adjusts for local anomalies such as new businesses or development projects expected to occur during the coming year. In addition, we receive input from a team of consultants for both sales tax and property tax projections. Continued growth is expected in the city's major revenue sources. The city's largest revenue source, sales tax, is projected to decline slightly from the prior year due to the end of the state's triple flip adjustment mentioned previously. Sustained growth in auto sales, building and construction, and general consumer goods are contributing to the strength of our local economy. Property tax revenues are expected to be two point three percent higher than the prior year due to a combination of increased home values, new home inventories, and the recapture of property tax from the homes that received value reductions during the recession. TOT has been trending between seven to eight percent growth in recent months due to both higher room oc, room rates and higher occupancy. It's anticipated that this trend will continue next fiscal year. Property tax in lieu of vehicle license fees increases along with the city's overall assessed valuation and is projected at three point eight percent next year. Operating transfers in reflect gas tax funds that are required by state law to be reseeded into a separate account but then are transferred into the General Fund to pay for street and road maintenance. Total gas tax is decreasing due to the falling gas prices, combined with a transfer of fund balance in the prior fiscal year. Licenses, permits, and service charges, which contain the development-related permit fees, is decreasing by one point two percent due to the timeline changes for both the Alter and Ruorapal residential projects. Overall, the trend in revenue is relatively flat with a point two percent decrease over the prior year. However, absent the state's triple flip adjustment, revenue growth is expected to be four point six percent over the prior year. As shown in the pie chart, total General Fund revenue is projected at sixty-nine point four million. Sales tax makes up half of this total revenue. Property tax contributes eleven percent, property tax in lieu of VLF, another eleven percent. Five percent comes from franchise fees that are collected from utility and cable companies who pay for the use of the public's right-of-way. An additional five percent comes from TOT charged on hotel and motel occupancy within the city. Nearly fifty percent of General Fund resources are dedicated to public safety, with police allocated forty percent and fire allocated nine percent net of the fire tax credit. Public works, which includes CIP administration, parks maintenance, and land development, makes up eighteen percent of the total budget with a total budget of twelve point nine million. CIP admin is fully reimbursed from eligible capital projects and is reflected as a General Fund revenue. Administration, which includes the City Manager's Office, emergency services, economic development, finance, human resources, city attorney, city clerk, city council, and debt service, all combined total fifteen percent of the General Fund. Community development, which includes planning and building and safety, receives six percent of the General Fund with a budget of four point five million. And the contribution to TCSD, which is part of the non-departmental category, is five point nine million for fifteen, for fiscal year fif, sixteen seventeen. As the largest expenditure of the General Fund, the Police Department budget is projected at twenty-seven point eight million for the coming year, which reflects an increase of seven point six percent over the prior year. The budget includes the replacement of a police motorcycle at a cost of thirty thousand dollars and a police service dog at a cost of twenty-one thousand dollars. The Police Department is currently, currently staffed with one hundred sworn officers, nineteen community service officers, and sixteen administrative personnel. And one additional police officer will be added in January per the agreement with Pachanga, bringing the total number of officers sworn to one oh one by the end of the fiscal year. As the city contracts with Riverside County Sheriff's Office, we are subject to the rate increases negotiated by the county. The contractual rate increase for next year is projected to eight percent, of which nearly two percent or five hundred thousand dollars is for the new communication system implemented by the county and will be included in the contract rate in perpetuity. Currently, three of the four Sheriff's Office bargaining units are, um, negotiating new contracts. The fiscal impact of these negotiations on the city will not be known until the middle of next fiscal year. Staff recommends maintaining five current vacancies into the next year, including one special enforcement team officer, one motorcycle officer, an accident investigator, and two CSOs. Maintaining these vacancies generates one point two million in annual savings. Finally, the cost-sharing arrangement for school resource officers will continue with the city and school districts sharing costs fifty-fifty to fund five SRO positions, saving the city approximately three hundred and fifty-six thousand per year. The Fire Department budget is projected at thirteen point one million, which is offset by an eight point three million dollar fire tax credit collected via property tax payments. The net impact to the city is six million dollars, which reflects a two percent increase over the prior year due to anticipated rate increases as CalFire is currently negotiating their labor contract with the state. The budget represents nine percent of the General Fund, and the department currently has sixty-five employees and maintains the four-person-per-engine staffing model. This year's allocation of funds towards local nonprofits through the Community Support Grant Program is budgeted at eighty-nine thousand, and the program is augmented with net proceeds received from the rod run event occurring earlier this year. Council's discretionary funding of twenty-five thousand is also included in next year's budget. And to help maintain Temecula's high quality of life and award-winning programs and services offered by the Community Services District, the General Fund contributes annually to the district. In sixteen seventeen, contribution is projected to be just over five point eight million, of which four point eight million will go towards recreation activities, six hundred and fifty thousand towards the library, and another three hundred and eighty-one thousand to cover the funding gap for residential streetlights. residential streetlights. Public Works is requesting the addition of a crack seal machine to help prolong the useful life of the city's road network. This sixty-three thousand dollar machine will be fully funded using gas tax revenues. Funds are also requested to replace the library's firewall and UPS, upgrade the public Wi-Fi system, and continue to fund the annual lifecycle replacements for city staff, computers, and monitors. With the collection of PEG funds, the IT Department has identified two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars' worth of audiovisual-related equipment to enhance the broadcast of the city council meetings and Channel Three content. The proposed operating budget reflects staffing levels consistent with the prior year with one-hundred-and-fifty-eight point two authorized positions, which include the five council members. It's important to note that city staffing levels have been reduced by twenty-five percent since two thousand and seven, or fifty-two and a half benefited positions. Staffing levels have remained constant since two thousand and eleven despite an eight percent increase in city population over the past five years. Salaries and benefits reflect the incremental transition to recommendations included in the reclassification plan through the filling of select vacant positions. Each position is thoroughly analyzed prior to filling the vacancy with an emphasis on business need and long-term fiscal impact. A total of twenty-six positions are anticipated to be transitioned to the new job structure and compensated from the newly adopted Salary Schedule B by the end of next fiscal year. And as with all cities that contract with CalPERS for retirement, employer contribution rates continue to increase year over year as CalPERS implements new actuarial standards. Fiscal year sixteen seventeen's rate is projected by CalPERS to be twenty-six percent of payroll versus twenty-three point eight percent in the prior year. The higher rate costs an additional two-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand dollars per year as compared to the prior year for the same labor base. As long as the city has available cash to prepay its annual CalPERS liability, it will either yield annual savings or help pay down the city's unfunded liability. For fiscal year sixteen seventeen, the prepayment will save the city approximately one-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars. Two years ago, the city transitioned to a self-insured status for workers' compensation coverage. This transition saved approximately two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars in annual premium costs. With a five-hundred thousand dollar deductible, called an SIR or Self-Inured Retention, per incident, the city must maintain an adequate reserve to cover claims expense up to the SIR amount. Industry standards recommend the reserve level be set at three times the SIR or for Temecula, one-point-five million dollars. During fiscal year sixteen seventeen, an additional six-hundred-and-forty-six thousand will be deposited into the Workers' Comp Fund, bringing the total reserve level up to eight-hundred-and-ten thousand. And the city will continue to deposit funds into this account until the recommended one-point-five million reserve is met. Finally, all negotiated salary benefit changes are reflected in the operating budget and the current MOU is set to expire at the end of the coming fiscal year. That concludes the General Fund portion of the presentation, so we will take any questions you might have at this point.
Councilmember Carmichael.
Thank you, uh, thanks as always for the great presentation. Not too many questions get sparked because you answer them all as we go along. But a couple of things. The, um, the seven-point-four million that we have in, uh, in fund balance that's projected, how would you categorize that as compared to twenty and five that we have in reserve? And, and under what circumstances would we tap into that seven-point-four for things that we wouldn't tap into for the reserve?
Let me take that. The seven-point-four million represents the, basically, the un earmarked portion of the total fund balance. So, the total fund balance was twenty, where's that slide? Twenty-five, let's say twenty-five million. So, we take that twenty-five million and we reserve twenty-five percent. That's the economic uncertainty in the secondary reserve. And then we assign another one-point-two million for future expenditures we know is coming in the following fiscal year, and then whatever is remaining, which is the seven-point-five.
No, no, and I understand that, how it comes about, but let's just say, God forbid, we have an earthquake and we need to repair roads for five million dollars. Would we take it out of the twenty percent reserve? Would we take it out of the, uh, fund, but seven-point-four fund balance? How do we use those funds? I mean, we haven't had to very much, which is great, but, uh, and it's very comforting to know that it's there. But, um, what are we using it for?
I think, I think, um, in that scenario, it would, fund balance is a lump, but it would, if, if we had a major catastrophe, we have the good fortune of using that seven-point-four million to address it, whether it's a, uh, an act of God, whether it's a lawsuit that we didn't anticipate on paying out, whether it's, um, something unexpected, we would use that, um, those funds that, that do not have strings attached. They, um, they're also available to the city council for one-time suggestions, you know, and we've been fortunate to have that, that available. Um, however, we, over the years, we've seen that number get smaller and smaller because we've been relying on that to, um, to fund, you know, the operating budget and the CIP.
Sure. It would be nice, and, uh, no rush on this, maybe it's before next year's budget, but it would be nice to see something in, in writing in terms of the, the objective of, uh, and projected uses, if necessary, of the different categories of reserves, I would call that one as well, um, just so that the council has a better idea of what's available, what isn't, uh, what would be prudent to, whether it's available or not, to make sure that we don't, uh, spend what we shouldn't be spending so. Because I do think there's some confusion over, uh, over that. A couple of other things. The, uh, uh, gas tax, two-point-three million in gas taxes revenue this year, down twenty-two percent. Um, I don't think that's gonna increase anytime soon. I think we're going to continue to see a decline there, not so much for the fluctuation in gas prices, but because of the proliferation of electric vehicles. We always hear talk about a conversion from the traditional gas tax to a, a vehicle miles-traveled system that's pretty controversial, but, um, are we kind of looking at that as, maybe we'll talk more in the five-year, but are, are we looking at that saying, um, if we have to be prepared for that to go away, how would that look? I guess I think that's, uh, hopefully, uh, Congress and the state combined will come up with some, some way to replace what's being lost, uh, but if they don't, that's gonna be a hit to, to all of us, saying we have to have that on our radar screen, and we probably do. Um, and then on the, uh, the one-time triple-flip payment adjustment this year, does that end that debacle?
Yeah.
This is it?
That's the end of it.
Sordid history, that whole thing designed to balance the state budget. Anyway, um, then on the, uh, the five vacant positions that we're continuing to carry in terms of public safety, at one-point-two million savings, I'm not sure it's really a savings in the true sense of the word, but, um, are we keeping those positions open because we've deemed that they're unnecessary or because we just can't afford them?
We can't afford them.
I thought that was gonna be what you were gonna say. Um, that's unfortunate, and, uh, you know, certainly at some point, uh, we can expect, although our Police Department Chief is run beautifully, uh, you can only do so much with what we give you, and, uh, at some point, that's gonna come back and bite us, so we're gonna have to be very careful of that. Um, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the elephants in the room at this point is the ever-increasing cost of policing, and we've talked about this for the past year, maybe the past couple of years, and as we see that still increasing, we projected another eight percent increase, which we, every city in the county that contracts with Riverside County agrees that's not sustainable. And so, we've looked at one alternative, and maybe you could bring us up to date on what the discussions are. We also know that Riverside County is auditing their police services, um, you know, cost-benefit, what they're getting for their dollar, and we haven't really seen a result of that, but, um, speaking with a couple of supervisors, um, I, you know, they're adamant that, that they're gonna have to hold the line at some point in negotiations, and if that's the case, that gives us some comfort level, but for now, we don't know what's, what's gonna happen at the county, and we're at the mercy of the county. So, um, in addition to looking at the other contract cities and banding together, which we've been kicking around for, you know, at least the past year, seriously, maybe two years, I would also like to maybe open discussions with, uh, our neighboring city, Murrieta. Uh, they have their own police department, and maybe there's a way that we could partner, I don't know, but just looking at every possible alternative. I've spoken with one council member, and nothing formal, of course, but we were just kicking around different ideas.
Right.
Murrieta's looking at their costs as well. And of course, there was a time when contracting was the only way to go because it was so much less expensive, we got so much more bang for our buck, but at, at eight percent a year, it's just not sustainable.
Sure, I, I can comment on that. Um, you know, this, this council authorized and approved us, um, we're one of nine contract cities that, that entered into a feasibility study for, for a joint powers authority, so that, that consultant's been hired, it's Matrix Consulting. We expect to, um, see some of those results probably in the next four or five months in terms of, what does that look like? What type of operational efficiencies can they come up with under a JPA model? I think it's important that we look at all of our options. Um, having said that, we're, we're very pleased with the level of service that, that RSO provides, um, and, and, uh, you know, when you evaluate the risk and lawsuits and, and the levels of service, they have done and continue to do a fine job. The, the primary concern is, is it's sustainable model, and I think, um, over the last year, this council, staff, we've gotten the attention, you know, regionally, um, in terms of, um, you're pricing us out of this market, and, and the Board of Supervisors, I think, is hearing that message and has heard it. Uh, an example of that recently was the MOU, I believe the Board of Supervisors approved for, uh, the District Attorney's Office and their public defender, and they held the line on, on that. And so, if that's any indication of, of future labor deals, um, the contract cities should be, hopefully, um, in a better fiscal position than, than eight percent, you know, and that's, that's what we've been asking for.
And I'm hearing that that's going to be the case, but, and if so, then...
Yeah, and we'll find out later next year, but we, we budgeted on the extreme end, um, just, just to be prepared for the worst.
And for the record, we don't wanna change the way things are. I mean, we've been very, very happy with our contract situation.
Right.
Um, and we love our police officers and the service that we get, obviously, second safest city in the country.
And Temecula's not alone. You know, all the contract cities are having these conversations now and having to make some, some difficult decisions, so.
So, um, on hold for now until we see, you know, what, what the county does, but, uh, I just want the residents to be assured that we are looking at all alternatives if we're forced to make a change. And we don't prefer that situation. It's not our first choice. Thank you.
Councilmember Ron.
Yeah, um, not surprisingly, I have a few comments, um, but I'll try and be as painless as possible this year. Um, so, uh, just a couple of things that, uh, that I, uh, heard and, and thought about since our, uh, sort of briefing meetings. Uh, one, and Jeff, Jeff had mentioned this on the gas tax, uh, I'd like to see if, as part of our legislative platform, we could create a city policy or, or position on that issue because as legislation is, is being proposed, it would be nice to have a city voice in Sacramento to let them know what we're thinking and how that affects or, or benefits, uh, us. Um, uh, another one is the, um, uh, conversation on, uh, public safety. Um, and, you know, I, I appreciate where we're coming from and I appreciate the discussions. Um, I'd, I'd caution starting a conversation with Murrieta at this point. I'd like to see the, you know, movement of the, um, uh, consultants that we're paying for.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, you know, I'd like to see the results of that, uh, first. Um, but I have some, you know, concerns, uh, about that whole process in the first place. I wasn't a big fan of, you know, taking city funds to pay for a study that, you know, I think we all kind of know how that's going to turn out. Um, I recognize it's a bit of a negotiating tool with the, with the county, uh, which is fine, but, um, you know, in being fiscally conservative, I, you know, gave me significant heartburn to have to pay for something that we kind of already intuitively know. Um, but, uh, going past that, uh, you know, I, I know we're roughly, what, nine officers short of where we would potentially like to be, and, and I think we could talk about, you know, chief with numbers where, you know, those ideally should be, but right now, you know, I, I understand the tribe is, is contributing, um, uh, to provide an additional, uh, public safety officer, sworn officer, I believe, right? Um, and, you know, I'd, I'd be curious that as, uh, as we talk about future budgets, not this year, uh, but future budgets, uh, I'd be curious to see how, what kind of program we could put in place or what sort of mechanism we could have, uh, to increase, you know, every one or every two years, one sworn officer within the city. Um, you know, I think it's important that we don't stay stagnant in the public safety field, um, and so, you know, whatever that mechanism may be, whatever those budgets may look like, I'd like to see, you know, some sort of, uh, plan, um, and, and recognizing that it's gonna have a serious impact if the city's budget, you know, maintains that level. Um, I'd also like to be able to ma- make sure that if an opportunity does arise where, you know, there are, uh, significant revenues or, or, you know, a change in the city budget, that we fill that gap as quickly as, and pragmatically as possible. Um, so, you know, whatever we could do to sort of meet that, um, you know, and, and whatever it is, whether it's a, you know, one officer per year or one officer every two years, I think, you know, if I could see those two different sort of models, I would appreciate that. Um, the, uh, the other one was, uh, on the fire side. Um, you know, there was, uh, uh, discussions over the year on Station Ninety-Five and opening up, uh, uh, that station, um, and what the triggers might be for, for when that station is opened. Um, and I'd like to get a better sense, if I could, from, uh, public safety and from, from the city of, what, staff of, of what, uh, what that trigger might actually be, how many homes, how many additional homes in the area need to be built, um, you know, and what, what kind of threshold we'd be looking at as far as response times or population. And then following that same vein, uh, the, uh, and, and Vince, you might know the, what's the name of the company that did the consulting report for Riverside County on?
G.
Trydata, okay, thank you. The, the Trydata report, uh, that the county had paid for with regard to fire services, I gotta say, I was extremely disappointed and, and, uh, frankly, just appalled by the recommendations made, uh, within that report, and, you know, feel free to disagree with me on this one, but, um, you know, I, you know, they, they, this was definitely not done, uh, I think, uh, with the city's best intentions in mind. Uh, their recommendation in that report was, you know, to, uh, open Station Ninety-Five, um, and then the shifting of city resources, take an engine out of, I believe it was Station Twelve, maybe, um, you know, shift it over there and then reduce total city staffing to three-person. Um, I found that to be frankly just an appalling report, uh, and, and very disappointing that they had gone ahead and made those recommendations with, as far as I could tell, zero support for some of those decisions, right? Opening Station Ninety-Five is consequential largely for the county. Over half of the calls, if we opened it today, would be going to the county. Why is the city being recommended to open a station that would largely benefit the county of Riverside? Doesn't make any sense to me. And why would we deplete our local resources? And we've had these discussions before about what, you know, our staffing levels mean to us and why we maintain those staffing levels. Um, it's not, you know, that we're trying to be better, we're hitting a standard that is nationally recognized as the acceptable standard, not a mediocre standard. Um, so, part of what I'd like to see is, uh, um, you know, that, that we as a, a city, and I'd be happy to do it personally, or whether it comes through a City Manager's Office or Mayor's Office, put a letter out in response to that saying, you know, this is, this is unacceptable, um, because I feel they've, you know, undermined, and, you know, if that document hangs out there, uh, I feel it undermines the, the work that the city has done to maintain the level of public safety that we have. Um, so I'd like to have us have a, a very public statement about that, uh, and, you know, my colleagues here are free to disagree with me, but, uh, I'm, I'm not sure that that, uh, that's a dangerous recommendation to have made, and especially in sort of lack of consultation with the city and what our staffing levels mean to us. Um, the, uh, okay, so, and then the last piece, uh, of the puzzle here is, has to do with, uh, still a bit of a public safety, uh, focus, um, and that is, has directly to do with the, um, aging infrastructure and the aging city. Uh, as the city gets older, our businesses and establishments are getting older as well. Um, and I think we've seen recently, you know, the results of some of that, some of the code violations potentially, some of the, um, fires that have happened in, in restaurants and so forth, electrical or otherwise, and it's just a result of businesses getting older. But it's also a result, I think, of businesses not necessarily complying with, uh, code and not necessarily keeping the city informed of changes in, uh, larger... necessarily keeping the city informed of changes in large appliances or other things. And if we're, you know, having a lot of these establishments with public access, frankly, it, you know, needs to be safe access. And so one of the things I'd like us to look into this year as well is potentially establishing annual or semi, you know, or every few years or whatever it is, a regular business inspection program. And this is, I think, consequential for a safe business environment, compliance with certificates of occupancy, business licensing, ensuring compliance with code and safety. And all of this would result in a direct benefit to public safety as well as the general safety of the businesses and potential damages or loss. You know, I think that's an important thing that we should be looking into this year. And from what I understand, if handled properly, it's actually a budget neutral program for the city, depending on how we would roll something like that out. So, you know, that's about the extent of my comments, I guess.
Thank you. Councilmember McCracken?
I was actually, I missed that one.
Pardon me? You don't have any comment?
No, sorry.
Okay.
He was raising his hand for me.
Mayor Proten.
Thank you. You know, Dr. Ron brings up a good point, and I would take it one step further. We have always quoted one officer per thousand as the benchmark, but so does the city of El Centro, so does the city of South Central, or, you know, Compton, so does the city. So, how do we know that one officer per thousand is the right number? You know, as the second safest city in the country and Marietta, you know, similarly, how do we know one officer per thousand is what we need? And Matt, when we're looking at a population base, depending on what our growth is, I would disagree with you to the extent that automatically adding one officer per year may or may not be necessary, depending on what our growth is for that year. But just based on that same question, what is ideal for a city with Temecula's demographic? And there was a lot of talk over the past three days about a new data collection technique, and it's called using psychodata. It's just not black and white numbers. They take into account the complexion of your city, your demographic, education levels, the overall environment of your city, the culture of your city. And clearly, the culture of Temecula is different than Santee or El Centro or some of those other cities, yet we still all use that same guideline of one officer per thousand. So what really is the ideal guideline for the city of Temecula? And as we consider, as we try to drill down and find out what that number really is, you know, I think that will help us plan better in the future. And if our demographic and our culture changes, then we have to revisit that every year, but clearly, we're doing something right because of our safety factors now. And we don't want to lose that. We don't want to lose that, but we need to see, what is that number for Temecula? Is it one per thousand or can it be fewer officers per person? You know, do we need to have more? At this point, I would say, no, we don't need to have more. I don't know. What is that number?
I strongly disagree with that.
Hold on, Councilmember Ron, I'll get to you in a second. Councilmember Camachero?
Just a brief comment on that, and I agree with you, but I think it also depends on what we set as a goal.
Yes.
That's realistic and, you know, okay, so we've been deemed the second safest city in America. We love that. We want to maintain that. And so we may have different goals than the cities that you cited.
Right.
In part because we believe we can achieve them. If you look at some cities that have a different demographic and a different budget parameter, it may not be realistic for them to ever be considered in the top 10 states they've ranked in America. But we can, and so that's a policy decision that we need to make, and I think we have it not necessarily, you know, with a hard, firm discussion. We want it to be the best it possibly can be because we think we can do that, and we can, and it's been that. Anyway, just so, there are a lot of factors that enter into that, but I agree with you. I don't think it's just an empirical number. I asked the question some time ago when that standard came about and the answer was...
Exactly. Where did that come, you know, where did that number come from?
Councilmember Ron?
Well, regardless of where the number comes from, and I think that was one of the things I said at the beginning in reference to the chief, you know, I deferred to our public safety experts to let us know what those numbers are. But we're not where we need to be, and I think that's undeniable. The rankings that we get as a city are largely, and correct me if I'm wrong, but largely based on violent crimes. So it's fantastic that we have low violent crimes compared to the national average, but with realignment and with Prop 47, it's undeniable that, you know, other types of crimes have increased in the city. So it has nothing to do necessarily with the demographic or the population or the, you know, makeup of the city. A lot of this has to do with external factors that we have no control over. So again, my point is, you know, let's not remain stagnant while the external environment is changing dramatically. We need to get in front of this, and we've seen the results, you know? We see the bumps in crime. And I don't think, you know, unfortunately, it'd be nice to be able to go back to the state and say, okay, you've cost us, you know, X number of, you know, percent increase in crime, so therefore you need to cover, you know, X percent of increase in public safety, right?
Oh, yeah, dream on.
That would be fantastic, but we're on our own here when these decisions are being made. And so in absence of any other fund, I think we still need to investigate what it would cost and how we would be able to increase, you know, public safety over a period of time to reach whatever target, you know, the experts feel is adequate. And there's a lot that goes into it, response times and so forth, patrol times. There's a lot that goes into it, but I don't think that, you know, we're, we are anywhere close to where we need to be. And, you know, a lot of these estimates of ratios are definitely rule of thumb, but, you know, just looking at what's happened in our city over the last decade or so, I think we could all agree that something needs to be done, and we need to make it a priority, whether it's a fiscal priority or at least an exercise in understanding what, you know, what it would take to meet those targets. I'd still like to see us pursue that.
But you don't want to limit yourself to an automatic number every year. You want to look at the, you want to look at the data first and see what that would be. So that's kind of what I was saying. You don't want to automatically go for one officer per year. And I said, it could be more than one per thousand or less than one per thousand, but you need to look at all those factors.
But I would say that in part of this analysis, we are, I think we can start with the assumption, and I think it's a good one, that we're not at the level we need to be, right? So if we start there, maybe we could make a guess, maybe we could do some sort of analysis, maybe we could work with, you know, the chief to try and figure out what is the target that we're really trying to aim for. And in that process, you know, I think we need to get to that target sooner rather than later. So I would still like to know, you know, what functionally does it do to the city if we're going to add, you know, one officer every year, one officer every two years? I'd still like to know that answer because regardless of whether it's, you know, six officers or 15 officers, you know, we are still in a deficit. So, you know, if we could provide that analysis now, once we have the numbers on where we need to be in that target, we'll be able to know what the fiscal impacts are immediately.
And Matt and Marianne, we're mixing two different discussions here. One is, I don't think anybody disputes what you're saying, and from what I picked up, Marianne, and what you and I are saying is, there shouldn't be a one standard fits all for cities. It should be tailored exclusively to our city for what our needs are based on a whole lot of factors. So I think we're closer to an agreement here on what we're talking about than we are apart.
Let me add by two cents. First of all, I want to agree with Councilmember Ron regarding the expenditures by the Sheriff's Department and whether or not their expenditures benefit the city. At some point in time, we have to object and object vehemently and just really get loud. I mean, we may not, it may not do any good, but all I know is, until you put that boat in the river and see what's around the bend, you don't know what happens. And it's getting to a point now where they're laying out some options for us that are clearly unsustainable. The actions of the Board of Supervisors and the pay increases are causing cities across, you know, certainly Western Riverside that contract with the county and the Sheriff's Department to have to go out and tax their citizens. I mean, there are rippling repercussions here that, you know, that just have to be addressed. And so if they're going to make those decisions that are going to cause cities who don't have the money to pay to have to go out and tax their citizens, then there needs to be some justification toward the benefit, not just to pay for some call center or something that's going to benefit some other side of the county. And so we need to begin to object vehemently. And I mean, really, really, really object to the point to where they get annoyed from hearing us. And so whatever that looks like, we need to do that. Now, hold on, I'll go back to you in a second. In relation to the number of police officers, I don't think anybody on this council or in the city would doubt that everything, everything stems from public safety, whether it's a quality of life or whether it's the thriving of businesses. I think it's public safety that brought us to where it's at. And over the years, we've transitioned to largely a tourist economy, okay? And so whether by design or by accident or a little bit of both, that's who we are now. And so we need officers on the street. And why, I understand what Councilmember Camachero is saying and Mayor Proten Edwards is saying about having some fixed number where we say, look, we're going to try to add one every year, et cetera. The number of officers we determine that is necessary is not one per thousand, it's not one per 800, it's whatever we think and say it is.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
That's the point.
And that's the point. And so I think there's your bridge. I mean, if I, because on one hand, I'm with you. Let's have a plan, Councilmember Ron, that over the next five years adds one every year. I'm cool with that because I know that's a standard for us. 10 years from now, I don't know if that's a standard. We'll know. Six years from now, I don't know if that's a standard.
Right.
We'll know. But I'll tell you, I have no problem with more officers on the street. I mean, and whatever it takes to do that. And so, was there any follow-up, Councilmember Ron? I think you wanted to follow.
Oh, just one piece, you know, and when you say we're, you know, underrepresented, that's both at the county level and the state level, you know, with the state contracts. And, you know, we talked about this a year ago, and we haven't really made any strides on that, but, you know, when the negotiations are occurring, the cities, the contract cities are typically left out of that discussion. And it's only after some sort of consensus is reached between labor and management that, you know, we're told this is what, you know, to expect. It would be nice, and I've said this before, and I've received a lot of pushback at the, not surprisingly, the state level and I'm sure at the county level as well, but it would be nice if there were, whether it's through the League of Cities or, you know, some mechanism where we were able to have, you know, I'm not asking for a seat at the table because I realize that's not a realistic request, but at least to have, you know, representation at some level at the state and county where partway through the negotiations, when they realize that, you know, something, you know, to be able to let these cities voice their concerns or voice their support. Because in absence of that, what we're handed at the end is now largely unsustainable, more so for some cities than others. And so it would be nice to create that mechanism. And we've talked about it, we've broached the subject at the county level, we've talked about it at the state level, and it has had no significant traction whatsoever. And I'd like to see maybe as part of what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, on the more vehement response is that we pursue that as a potential option and say, look, we really, we're not kidding, we want representation, and I know we're not the only contract out there that wants that kind of voice.
Councilmember Camachero?
I would disagree with both of you. I think we have been very vehement in our discontent, at the county level anyway, I can't say for the state, but, you know, Temecula took the lead in convening all the contract cities, we got everybody together, we discussed the problem, we discussed possible solutions, we brought on a consultant on board. Whether we didn't want to spend the money or not, I understand that, I don't disagree, but we had to send a message to the county that we were serious and we weren't just blowing in the wind here. This will be the first time, this next round of negotiations coming up at the county, when we'll be able to see how effective we've been in our discussions. In past years, that hasn't been the case because they went, did whatever they wanted to do. And when these increases started to surface in the last two or three years and we saw the extent of the problem, we all rose up. Now, if things go differently at the county over the next several months and we start to see that we're going to have that eight percent increase that we hope is too high, then I would agree with you. Then we need to get the hammers out.
Yeah.
Again, whether that'll be effective or not, I don't know. But I'm pretty optimistic. I think our voices are being heard and I think the discussion has shifted. So we'll find out soon.
We have county supervisors coming to us individually when we have meetings at the county and volunteering, hey, you know, I want you to know that we are going to hold the line.
Yeah, right, but I, no, and don't get me wrong, I recognize that there's been some strides at the county level, but it's not a policy, right? I mean, so that's this year because they're, you know, it's the squeaky wheel sort of philosophy, right? So it's this year that it's being paid attention to. In future years, different councils, different attitudes could change, and so I'd like to see more of a formalized process or procedure with both the county and the state in this decision-making.
Then there's no reason we can't keep this coalition of all the contract cities going and meet together and develop a strategy with our fellow contract cities to keep the heat on them. And then I would also add that, you know, I think in bringing forward the one per thousand, I don't, I just don't want us to get hung up on that number in particular. We need to decide whatever it is that this city needs, that's what we, that's what our goal should be. And then not get hung up on the one per thousand because clearly, that is just a number that somebody's plucked out of the air. I don't even know where it's come from. So we just need to decide what is right for our city.
Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, just a couple, and we hear all the comments and the concerns and the direction, and we'll follow up accordingly. Just a couple of things. The KPMG study that the county's doing as well as the study that we're backing with the other contract cities, I think one of the things that I hope that comes out of either of those or both of them will be some objective data on operational efficiencies for community policing, specific to our city, okay? So not just the JPA or contract, no contract, but there might be some things in there that we haven't necessarily looked at. Maybe we have, I mean, we have a great working relationship with Chief Kubel, but if there's some things that come out of that, that I could sit down with him and say, you know, rather than using a deputy in this situation, could we use a CSO? Could we save costs here? I'm hopeful that coming out of both of these studies, that would be something tangible that we can hang our hat on and we can look at going forward. Secondly, I agree about, community policing has changed with Proposition 47 and AB 109. I think it still remains to be seen what that is going to do in our respective communities, but there's no doubt in our gut, we know that is changing community policing and on misdemeanors and felonies and downgrading. We need to accept that, we need to know what that's going to look like in terms of our existing workforce. Next is to Councilman Ron's point, you're going to see some charts here in a little bit. Not exactly what you asked for, but something we have taken a look at. Had we kept pace with an arbitrary ratio, what that fiscally would look like if you continued to add officers year over year? And it's not a pretty picture, I'll just warn you, without a new revenue stream or without significant cuts to non-safety. So if there is anything more on the general fund or questions, we're prepared to move on to the community services operating budget.
Go ahead and move on.
Okay. Mr. Hawkins?
Thanks, Eric. In the fiscal year 1617 TCSD annual operating budget, the projected revenue is estimated at $20.5 million. Major funding sources are broken down by TCSD rates and charges at $10 million. 1.85 million, which represents the TCSD portion of Measure C funding. The other half goes to park maintenance, which is included in the general fund. 5.9 million, contribution from the city's general fund. And 2.6 million is made up of a combination of recreation fees and contract class user fees and other revenue sources. Again, which brings us to total projected revenues at $20.5 million. Our next slide provides our proposed expenditures at $20.8 million. On the expenditure side, our main categories are as follows. 9.5 million to parks and recreation, 7.7 million recycling and refuse hauling, 1.5 million at slope maintenance, 1 million for residential street lighting, and $823,000 for the Ronald H. Roberts Temecula Public Library. I really like the way that sounds. And $245,000 for operations and maintenance associated with the Harvest and Lake Park, and $9,843 for dirt road maintenance services at Leaver Road. The shortfall between revenues and expenditures within the TCSD is not uncommon, and this difference is being made up with fund balances from various service levels for one-time expenses. one-time expenditures. Now regarding the city's special tax, when Measure C was passed by overwhelmingly seventy-seven percent in nineteen ninety-seven, that was nearly twenty years ago, voters established a tax rate of seventy-four dollars and forty-four cents per home, per year, which we are proposing to charge this fiscal year. Our residents, however, receive an excellent level of service because of the city's general fund contributions towards parks and recreation services. In fact, if our parks and recreation program was totally funded solely through Measure C funding, it would cost our residents a hundred and seventy-eight dollars per year. While it was always envisioned the general fund would subsidize the Measure C contribution for park and recreation services in a reasonable amount, this is an area that we must remain sensitive to today, and in out of years as well. This subsidy, with new facilities coming, uh, online, will be important to evaluate in our five-year forecast. As you can see, our residents realize the savings of a hundred dollars forty-five cents per home, per year, as this is paid by the general fund, not Measure C. As outlined before, the general fund will contribute five point nine million dollars as part of the Temecula Community Services District funding in fiscal year sixteen seventeen. Under our highlights for fiscal year sixteen seventeen, that includes the continuation of the TCSD's iconic annual ride-run event, which brings over fifty-five thousand people to O-Town each year to enjoy the signature event. The Fourth of July event will continue with the spectacular fireworks show at Ronald Reagan Sports Parks and parade through O-Town. Christmas Time will also offer Santa's Electric Light Parade and ice skating in O-Town. Additionally, the city will pay tribute to our local veterans at the annual Veterans Day event on the steps of City Hall. Finally, we will remember and honor those who lost their lives fifteen years ago on nine eleven, at a special ceremony held at the Temecula Duck Pond. The city also continues to collaborate with both the O-Town Temecula Association, as well as Visit Temecula Valley, to bring residents and visitors these wide-ranging seasonal attractions, which are synonymous with the high quality of life here in Temecula. Another TCSD highlights, this year TCSD staff will utilize a portion of the former YMCA facility to offer recreation programs and classes. I should note that the staff will bring forward a more appropriate name for the subcommittee, for subcommittee and city council review and consideration. Expanded programming at Eagle Sore Playground on Splash Pat will be offered through our Human Services Division. Earlier in the year, Councilmember Ron and the city council charged staff with compiling and assessment the senior inactive adult services. As such, staff will be exploring the recommendations from the Senior Services Master Plan Process to identify future programs and projects. And the History Museum will be expanding their outreach to elementary school students with the new Temecula Treasures Program, which essentially are treasure chests and museum artifacts that allow for the History Museum experience to become mobile. TCSD will also continue to offer the highest quality of sports, recreation, and aquatics programs this next fiscal year. The city's parks and open space, open spaces will continue to be safeguarded with our Park Ranger Program. And as shared during Tuesday's council update, in concert with other city staff, public safety, the nonprofit community, faith-based organizations, and regional partners, TCSD will continue the program administration of the city's three-link program. Collaboration, coordination, and communication in a responsible, yet compassionate way, to address the issue of homelessness in Temecula. So from community services to community development, unless you have any questions, I'd like to introduce Community Development Director Luke Watson, who will walk you through the Successor Agency and the Redevelopment Agency annual budget.
Please continue.
Luke? Thanks, Kevin. Finally, the proposed successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, otherwise known as SARDA, fiscal year sixteen seventeen operational budget includes debt obligations of the former Temecula Redevelopment Agency. The city's redevelopment agency was dissolved by the state in two thousand and twelve, and since then, the city has worked to wind down the remaining SARDA obligations. It is critical to note that the funding source for the repayment of the SARDA obligations is the Riverside County Redevelopment Property Tax Trust Fund. This fund is made up of property tax receipts collected by the county of Riverside. The city's only responsibility is to administer the SARDA obligations until the term of those obligations expire. The county trust fund proceeds are simply passed through the city. No general fund dollars are obligated or used to satisfy the SARDA obligations. The State Department of Finance approved the following outstanding obligations for fiscal year sixteen seventeen. First, debt service payments for, for the former RDA bonds, including the two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven issuances, and total six point six million dollars. And one point two million is other DOF approved obligations, including the Abbott Owner Participation Agreement, Abbott Development and Disposition Agreement, and Affordable Housing Obligations. If there are no other questions, I'll go ahead and turn it over to the city manager to discuss next steps.
Please continue.
Council have any questions or comments on TCSD or SARDA?
Negative.
Before we move on?
Anybody?
Just one.
Matt?
On the, um, TCSD, and this goes back to the budget issue, I appreciate, uh, all the hard work your staff did this last year on, uh, on a lot of the programs, and, and then following up on the, uh, the ice rink, um, the, the, uh, private donations and support. Um, and I can't recall what the offset was.
I think it was approximately six thousand dollars, I think, applied directly to the rink.
Wonderful. I, I think that's a, that was a great step forward. Um, I'd, I'd like to, uh, and, and we've talked about this as a council before, but, you know, I'd like to see that, that we, you know, aggressively pursue, uh, sponsorships wherever appropriate, but I recognize that one of the, uh, issues related to that is the council policy of a fifty percent, uh, contribution back to, uh, the, uh, community services grants. Um, I'd like to see if we couldn't revisit that at a future meeting, uh, to retire that requirement, um, because I, I, I do know that's a, a bit of a hesitation on some of our, uh, community partners in their, in their donations. Um, so I'd like to see if we could revisit that at some future time, because I think that the ice rink this year, uh, you know, established a nice benchmark and a great example of how we could help offset that contribution from the general fund, and, and that's becoming more important as the, as the years go on, so I'd like to see us pursue that.
If, I, I might recommend that maybe we'll, uh, staff will put something together for the finance subcommittee, as far as the corporate sponsorship policy, and then we can, we can work through that, and before we bring it back to the full council, is that acceptable?
Right.
Okay. All right. Uh, formal adoption of the fiscal year sixteen seventeen op budget will be presented to the city council on June fourteenth, as was mentioned, uh, along with the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen twenty-one, uh, CIP. Um, per city policy, we can move ahead, two slides. Um, per city policy, the staff creates five-year financial forecasts of the general fund and TCSD each year. This long-range forecast serves as a strategic, strategic planning tool to help evaluate the city's ability to meet its long-term obligations. The benefit of long-range planning is to alert decision-makers of trends in time to implement changes if necessary.
Jen?
Sorry. The five-year forecast includes realistic growth, revenue growth assumptions, uh, based on recent trends and known changes on the horizon. Expenditure projections reflect information received from the county related to both police and fire contract, services contracts. Police costs are expected to increase between five and eight percent per year due to the rising labor and benefits cost, and the implementation of the new communication system. Fire costs are reflect, fire costs reflect growth rates between two to seven percent per year, and both police and fire bargaining units are in the midst of labor negotiations. Upon the conclusion of those negotiations, the projections for police and fire costs will be updated to reflect the negotiated labor rates. Additional factors that will affect costs over the five years include the rising pension costs, as CalPERS implements new actuarial standards in the way they calculate their rates. The city's rate is expected to increase eight percentage points over the next five years, while law enforcement is projected to increase by eleven percentage points, bringing the employer's contribution rate to thirty-five percent of payroll. As indicated in the past two budget workshops, the general fund is facing a structural deficit due to expenditures rising faster than revenue. The general fund is expecting this imbalance to begin as early as next fiscal year, with a seven hundred and twenty-four thousand shortfall in revenues. By fiscal year eighteen nineteen, if no changes are implemented, the city will not be able to meet its policy-level reserves of twenty-five percent, and by fiscal year twenty twenty-one, the annual revenue shortfall will reach four and a half million dollars, and further deplete fund balance below policy-level reserves. This chart illustrates the projected growth of the general fund's revenue and expenditures over the coming five-year period. With the anticipated increases in public safety, expenditures are projected to outpace revenues beginning next fiscal year, with the gap in revenues over expenditures compounding each year thereafter. This chart shows the expenditure trend for both police and fire services, including six years of actual expenditures, and six years of anticipated costs. Between two thousand and nine and two thousand and fifteen, actual police costs rose seventeen percent, or three and a half million dollars, while fire increased by two, twenty point six percent, or eight hundred and eighty-five thousand. Now, over the next six-year period, it's anticipated that police costs will rise another fifty-two percent, and fire another seventy-eight percent, for a combined increase of sixteen point five million dollars in five years, six years. This growth rate reflects no additional growth in police staffing, even though the city is currently nine officers below recommended levels. The growth rate also reflects the maintenance of fires' four-person, per-engine staffing levels, and the opening of Fire Station Ninety-five as, in year twenty twenty-one, as the Roarpa Ranch development nears completion. While these costs are merely projections at this point, this chart reflects the potential compounding effect of the anticipated rate increases in public safety, unless alternative measures are implemented to contain costs. The continued trend of expenditures outpacing revenues will ultimately deplete fund balance, and this chart demonstrates how quickly this may occur if measures are not implemented within the next few years. In just two more years, the city will not be able to meet its policy-level reserves at twenty-five percent, and by year five, will have a seven point nine million dollar shortfall in meeting the reserve requirement. This chart also demonstrates the benefits of long-range fiscal planning by acknowledging a looming structural deficit, while providing enough advance notice to implement course-corrective actions. As an example of this course correction, the strategic decision to hold city staffing levels constant, and keep key positions vacant in order to curtail cost escalation. This chart provides a hypothetical example of the general fund outlook had the city retained the one sworn officer per one thousand population staffing ratio. Looking out only one or two years, the general fund appears to have adequate funds to maintain the ratio. However, due to the compounding effect of these costs, combined with the, combined with the growing population, funds are quickly depleted within five years. With population nearing one hundred and fifteen thousand by year twenty twenty-one, the city would need an additional fourteen officers to maintain the ratio. The cost impact of these additional officers would fully deplete fund balance in year twenty nineteen, and create a negative fund balance of nearly seven million dollars in five years. This long-term, it's this long-term focus that has provided Temecula City Council the vision to be fiscally prudent and maintain balanced budgets.
In order to balance the five-year forecast, we can only reduce expenditures, increase revenues, or do a combination of both. To help contain cost escalation, we are maintaining vacant positions where feasible, minimizing non-personnel-related costs, and continuing to defer maintenance and contributions to asset management programs. In fact, over the past ten years, the city council and city management have effectively controlled costs in order to remain fiscally solvent throughout the Great Recession to today. This next chart, I think, tells a very impactful story on where we are today, and how we got here. It summarizes several key demographic and economic metrics over the past ten years, when combined, illustrate solid fiscal restraint. Population has increased by eleven percent over the past ten years, while the city's authorized staffing levels declined by twenty-five percent, or fifty-two and a half positions, creating savings in excess of six point five million dollars per year. Of the twenty percent increase in the general fund budget, the non-safety departments overall have increased by only two percent in ten years. While CalPERS rates have nearly doubled, from thirteen point nine percent to twenty-six percent of payroll, CalPERS costs have increased twenty-six percent, or five hundred and sixty-five thousand, per year due to pension rate escalation. Per capita spending in non-safety departments has decreased eight percent in ten years, while police and fire services per capita spending has risen thirty-three percent and twenty-seven percent, respectively. The number of sworn officers in two thousand and sixteen is equal to two thousand and seven levels, which reflects a ten-officer decrease from the peak in two thousand and nine. While this reduction in police officers saves over three million dollars per year, costs since two thousand and seven have increased forty-nine percent. Fire personnel has remained constant since two thousand and seven, while costs have increased forty-one percent. Responsible labor negotiations limited cost of living adjustments to three point five percent over the past six years, compared to the CPI increase of nine percent since two thousand and ten, saving the city nearly one million dollars per year. And finally, as the general fund revenue has increased by ten percent over the past ten years, total expenditures have increased by double that amount, or twenty percent. I believe the previous chart, combined with strategic measures, depicts how the city, how the city council and management have systematically reduced budgets by over twenty-three million dollars per year, weathered the Great Recession, and continue to preserve public safety levels within our given revenue constraints. As the council addresses the five-year projections, it is important to keep an eye on additional impacts to the city's budget. It's been mentioned, but as we look into Temecula's future, the importance of properly-established and annually-funded maintenance accounts is becoming more and more critical as our infrastructure ages. By infrastructure, I am including proper maintenance and reinvestment in our park playground system, recreation, synthetic turf fields, streets and roadways, and aging public facilities. It has been twenty-three years since the city adopted the original general plan, and eleven years since its latest comprehensive update. Over the next five years, this very well may be another prudent update, and exercise, and expense to plan for, given the development of Temecula and what remains. On a related topic, we envision it to be equally important to continue city council's fiscally-responsible policy to dialogue with developers requesting general plan amendment changes, that procedurally, they will be required to complete a fiscal impact analysis, and identify how their project will mitigate the expense of their development on general city services and public safety. The eventual opening of Roarpa Fire Station Ninety-five, when the rooftops within the Roarpa Ranch area warrant this station being operation, we will need to consider the expense, the policy of this amenity. In our conceptual planning, this facility would possibly come online in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Staff will remain vigilant on reducing expenditures wherever possible, including water and energy conservation efforts, citywide, as well as economic development outreach, and strategies that can generate new revenue in the city in the form of TOT, or, or sales tax. CalPERS unfunded liabilities are a growing concern, as you heard, from state and local governments combined. For the third year in a row, we will take advantage of CalPERS prepayment option for our annual pension costs, creating an estimated hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in savings for fiscal year sixteen seventeen. And finally, as you've heard throughout this presentation, the rising costs of public safety are top concern. But it is important for me to acknowledge, as I did earlier, the exceptional service that we are afforded by both our police and fire personnel. And undoubtedly, they do contribute to the high quality of life in our community. That said, several contract cities of Riverside County, including Temecula, are participating in that study to evaluate alternative methods of service delivery, including a joint powers authority. It is expected the results of this study will be available in five months, at which time we will discuss those options with the city council. At this time, I'd like to introduce our city clerk, Randy Joel, who will provide an update on our recent community outreach efforts. Randy?
Thank you, Aaron. In light of the information received at last year's budget workshop regarding future fiscal challenges, the city council asked staff to agendize the subject matter for an upcoming meeting. At the July two thousand and fifteen meeting, the- At the July two thousand fifteen meeting, the council gave clear direction to engage, educate, and solicit feedback from the community regarding its priorities for maintaining our high quality of life and essential services, including public safety. In response to that direction, we held three community workshops in different locations throughout the city, and a professional independent survey was conducted. Based on the results of that survey, which were presented to the public and the city council in October two thousand fifteen, the city council gave additional direction to continue the ongoing community engagement effort. The official Join the Conversation effort was launched in January two thousand sixteen and is ongoing to the present day. The current effort intentionally utilizes a variety of outreach methods to promote and encourage interaction with as many Temecula residents as possible. Approximately three thousand responses were received through Survey Monkey. Approximately fifteen thousand users were reached through social media, including Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Over sixty-eight thousand were reached through the city's Constant Contact and school district's Peach Jar email blasts. Over eighty thousand were reached through print media, including the city's newsletter and activity guide, as well as the Chamber of Commerce's newsletter. Numerous others were reached through speakers' bureaus and community meetings. Two days, over a hundred-and-eighty-thousand single-use impressions were measured in our community. That number would be much higher if repeat methods on different dates were also included. It is important to note that community leaders and organizations, including the Chamber of Commerce, the Temecula Valley Unified School District, Pachanga Rancho Community Church, and many others, did a wonderful job in helping us to get the word out to the entire community and encourage participation in this effort. While the effort is ongoing and continues to be analyzed, the early trend clearly shows that the Temecula community continues to value its high quality of life and wishes to maintain its essential services. Specifically, trends show that this community's priorities include maintaining nine-one-one emergency and police response times, preventing cuts to paramedic services, local police, and fire protection, maintaining school safety patrols, addressing traffic congestion on local streets, preventing cuts to services for the disabled and seniors, and maintaining other vital services that provide the quality of life residents have come to expect in the city of Temecula. With respect to next steps, the Join the Conversation effort is ongoing and will continue into June and July with surveys, speakers' bureaus, and community leader meetings. In addition to adopting the operating budget and capital improvement program at the June fourteenth meeting, the city council will also be asked to consider the approval of an agreement for the second independent community opinion survey. On July twenty-sixth, the city council will receive the results of that survey and provide any additional direction accordingly. This concludes the Join the Conversation update, and unless there are any specific questions, I'll turn the presentation back over to city manager Adams.
Are there any questions? Oh, sorry, you're back. You're so quiet, I didn't even hear you come in.
Well, in closing, I did not want the forecasted concerns, once again, to overshadow the city's fiscal solvency today and and the very responsible proposed budget and capital budget for the coming year. We have a great deal to be proud of. We remain a blessed community on many, many fronts. And I'd like to thank all the department heads and their staff for their efforts in preparing excellent budget submittals. And I also want to recognize the members of the budget team who have dedicated many hours over the past several months to complete this year's AOB and CIP binders. My special thanks to Jennifer Hennessy, Rudy Graciano, Pascal Brown, Sean Jones, and Shirley Robinson. And with that, your staff is available to answer any other further questions that you may have, and I believe we do have one speaker.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and call that speaker now.
Mr. Mayor, the speaker is Chester Mordecai.
Good morning, Chester.
Good morning, councilmen, city staff, and audience. My name's Chester Mordecai. I'm the president of Teamsters Local Nine-Eleven in Long Beach or Bellflower, California. We represent about nine thousand public sector members across Southern California, about seventy-five different cities during that over that period. I was I'd been the business agent here since nineteen ninety-three. I've watched this city grow from what it was in ninety-three to what it is today. And I've worked with several different executive administrations and city managers and and several different city councils over that period of time. I think that I what I witnessed today, to be honest with you, is a really good spirited conversation. I think you made progress. I sat through this budget presentation last year, and I think some of the same concerns that are being raised today have been raised by your city administration. And I think that it's important also to note that the the outreach program definitely signals that the community wants to maintain the current level of services and benefits that all of you in the governing body and the administration have helped to build since nineteen ninety-three. You have some structural issues. Just one thing I want to before I get into those structural issues, I just wanted to thank the council for adopting our class and comp study that that we worked on internally for several years. And we've taken a position, the bargaining unit and the employees that have been here a while, to incrementally continue to implement that class and comp study within the restrictions of the current revenue structure. And that's an ongoing discussion, and it does create some impacts. And the impacts are, it's going to be you're going to start to see accelerated attrition, whether it's through retirements or for or other people leaving to go to other agencies. When you take a look at the disparity between the nine percent in CPI, the increase in CPI since zero-seven, and the three and a half percent wage increase that employees have had since that time, it's pretty striking. And then you turn around and take a look at the model and the safety and sworn issue, and you've got a projected ten percent increase ongoing that's eventually going to eat up all your reserves. You're you're at a crossroads, and it's not unusual for cities to get to crossroads. And it's how you handle those crossroads from this year forward that's going to be important. I think you have a city community that that is, you know, high-profile, well, their annual their annual incomes are in a place where the quality of life that they expect is based on the services they get. It was projected in in your your presentation that the year-over-year increase in that base salary or that base income for residents in Temecula is nine-point-five percent. So I think while you're at the crossroads, you have a community that's well, that that earns well, that supports the city council, that wants to maintain the services. So without going into all the little technical things, I think you ought to continue to reach out to the community and find that formula that will help us deal with this projected structural deficit. It's coming, and I'll give you a I'll give you a wake-up call. I have agencies right now that, when they were at the crossroads, when they were modern and in growing cities, they didn't deal with police and fire and those costs and the model that we're working under. I have cities right now that the cost of police and fire is seventy-three percent of general fund. In city of San Diego, right now, because the city of San Diego hasn't dealt with their issues, we have nine-to-ten-minute wait times on nine-one-one police calls on the weekends in San Diego. I represent a safety group in San Diego, and we're dealing with those issues now. But if you continue to defer the costs, if you don't deal with the model, I think that police and fire in this country are under siege. They do a good job, but the model has to change because it's non-sustainable. The there's other aspects that need to be taken care of. There's it's well documented on lots of document documentaries on television, some of the social issues that caused the the spike in cost for police and fire. Until our government and our social structure start to deal with some of those issues, nothing's going to change. And so I think everybody's trying to work in the same direction. The Teamsters remain supportive of the administration here, and the city council will continue to work with you guys. But I just I have to at some point come up here and say, you've got to remember your employees that are the rank-and-file miscellaneous employees are the ones that really do the heavy lifting on a day-to-day basis to implement all the projects, all of the policies, all the nice things that this city and this community have to offer. So, thank you. And just a reminder, we do have negotiations coming up next year. February, March is that, you know, during the mid-budget cycle, and so you probably start to see more of me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chester. And very well said. I think you covered a great deal of ground in a short period of time. Thank you. Okay, we're at a discussion point. Ladies and gentlemen, are you giving me the finger? Go for it, Mr. Comicharo.
He was, but it wasn't that finger.
I don't know if you insulted me or you with that comment. I don't know. But, you know, I just, another great presentation, everybody. So I think all of our thanks to to the presentation and making sure that we understand the the good things and the bad things that we're facing over time. So appreciate that. I didn't want to let the morning go without a comment on the the speaker earlier, Mr. McDonald. For one, he suggested that I ask him to come here. I did not. I suggested to him if he wanted to raise the issues, this was the appropriate form to do so. But I do think he raises an interesting question, and I don't think we've grappled with it to the extent we should, and maybe we should when we when the budget does come back later. But we've continually funded balloon and wine for good reason, and I don't have a problem with that. And I'm not suggesting we don't fund them this year or in the coming years. But I don't think we've done a good enough job as a council on really looking at why we fund them. And the event is handled through our economic development structure and the subcommittee of now Marianne and I, it has been others in the in the past. And we hear a lot about, well, they don't give a lot of money to charity, and they don't. And that's fine, but is that why we fund them? And I think we have to identify ourselves the reasoning there, and that the purpose of the economic development structure that we have is to support those events that support our business community and create additional revenue overall for the city and its businesses. And so if we want to change that, we should discuss it. If we don't want to change that, then I personally think that the expenditure is appropriate. It would be nice to know. I don't know if really if we can quantify, but it would be nice to know what the net effect is in terms of business development. How much fuller are the hotels than they would be otherwise? How much additional business do the restaurants do? Of course, the hotels produce TOT tax for us that is substantial, as we saw today. So anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there, but I didn't want it to to leave this morning without at least a comment on on the comments made by the citizens. Oh, I'm sorry. Your meeting, go ahead.
No, no, yeah, yeah.
Are you giving me the finger?
Was that you, or did you want to say something?
I'll defer to the council, and then I have a couple of comments.
Marianne, go ahead.
Well, I want to compliment staff on excellent presentation. We covered a lot of ground this morning on a changing environment. And Luke, I want to specifically compliment you, or you may want to pass on the kudos to whoever it was that that provided the first-time definition for how SARDA functions through the county and that we are just the pass-through. I don't think it's ever been presented that way, and I can't remember the exact verbiage that you used. But you painted the perfect picture, because people often say, well, the city owes money. And you made it beautifully clear in the way that that functions, that we are just the pass-through for that separate agency. So congratulations on that. I never heard it presented that way.
Thank you.
And then, I mean, what we saw today was, you know, if the takeaway is that we provided a current overall view of our the fiscal climate, and the city is in today solid fiscal shape. But I want to really for people to go away with the fact that we are looking out to the future in an effort to be responsible. We don't want to be one of those cities that's caught flat-footed and is behind the curve that Chester talked about, and we will not be one of those cities. So we're looking at what future impacts are going to be for the city, and we're planning ahead so that we don't get behind the curve. And that's what you're going to hear when we come when the budget comes forward.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, did you want to?
I think Councilman McCracken.
I see. Were you going to comment on, hold on, hold on, were you going to comment on what Mr. Comicharo said, or was your comment in general?
No, I was on the balloon and wine. I was just gonna provide a little more clarity on that, since the speaker brought it up. But in 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 the draft operating budget for fiscal year sixteen seventeen, the the note the subcommittee of Mayor Pro Tim Edwards and Councilman Comicharo approved a decrease in funding next year to the balloon and wine by ten percent. So I believe what's built into the draft operating budget is a twenty-seven-thousand-dollar grant. And so I just wanted to clarify that. Also, in the sponsorship agreements, and we addressed this a few years ago, every other year, there is a financial audit required of of the Temecula Valley Balloon and Wine. And so for next year's funding, should should that be approved, they will be subject to that financial audit as well. And then to the point that was made, I don't believe historically we have been pledging these dollars with the expectation that there would be charitable giving on their part as a nonprofit to other charities. So I just wanted to state that unless policy-wise something changes, you know, I think it is a good good question. But but the reason we've been funding it at those levels historically, there is empirical data to show that all of our hotels are full during the balloon and wine weekend. We do benefit economically from that. We do benefit from the marketing and advertising of bringing that type of crowd into our immediate city and outside our city. So that has been the primary reason for for the sponsorship over the years. Just wanted to add that.
And I wanted to, while we're on that topic, because I like what you had to say, and there's sort of a an interesting paradigm going on. At some point, you ask yourself, how much city funding do they need when they're sitting on, if those numbers are accurate, you know, a million dollars in the bank? At some point, when these events take off and are able to sustain themselves, do they really need our money? Now, we definitely, you know, have a benefit, but then you ask yourself, it's an established event. Does our thirty-thousand dollars a year and now twenty-seven going to make a difference in how they stage that event? With the amount of money in the bank, it appears not. And so then then you say to yourself.
And that's where the speaker, while we haven't traditionally asked the balloon and wine festival, you know, what are you giving back? And maybe we couldn't. I mean, maybe they're a nonprofit, and in a sense, nonprofits still want to make a profit so they can turn around and use it for the next whatever.
And that and that's why the money's in the bank.
Yeah. But I guess the 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 point is the taxpayer asks, you know, if they're doing okay, why do they need the city's money? And that's an interesting thing. We we made the same determination with the Coleman race. We said, but in that one, it's a little more different because we said, well, there's not that much of an economic development activity over it. So and the money was going out to San Bernardino and other places and wasn't staying local. So, you know, it's it's interesting. And then when I hear that, and this is this is a, again, topic for discussion, they've kind of graduated into it's more of an event than it is a local showcase, okay? And which, in the past, it was a local showcase. And so, again, what does that mean? I don't know. You know, it's a yearly event, and they're bringing, you know, outside people that, you know, our own woneries aren't participating, et cetera. Again, I I don't know what that means, or if that's even our business, to be honest.
If I could, I applaud the the speaker for raising the issue, because I do think that periodically we should be looking at these this event and all the events, you know, not that we shouldn't fund them. It's just that to go year after year after year saying, we've always done it, so let's do it, is not the proper way to do it, and we all know that.
But we asked those questions. We asked those exact questions. And the answer to why do they have that much money in the bank? When they start preparing for the for the following year, they spend all that money on fencing and setup. And I mean, so that money is their front money for the for the next event. And, you know, when you think about, there are lots of sponsors for that event, and they put their name out there. And, you know, when you think about, there are lots of sponsors for that event, and they put their name out there, and they get banners all over the place as a, so it's advertising. So is the city, in effect, a sponsor? Yeah, you could say we are. So we're buying a sponsorship. Maybe we just need to look and see what a sponsorship costs.
And what's the benefit?
Well, and I'll, just my last comment on the issue, it's, it's, it's interesting. If we have a lot of microbreweries and they want to set up, and then they're told they can't, on one hand, it's not our event, and it's not our business, so are we going to sit here and say, you know, you must? On the other hand, are we willing, is that part of our economic development plan is to have our local breweries or wineries participate in that? Is that beneficial to us? I think in some sense, yes. In another sense, it's not our event to tell them what to do with it.
Exactly.
Contention or funds on, we could make our funding contention on certain things. I mean, you know, if it's important enough to us to highlight, exactly.
And are we different than any other sponsor? I mean, by the virtue of the volume of the funds we provide, we can make that argument, but.
Right. I think we let them run it the way they want to run it, and then we decide whether, based on that, we want to fund them or not, you know? We could condition them, you know, but how much do we want to do that?
And, and you know, we're spending time on this topic because we've just heard a budget presentation where, as Chester said, I, you know, it's a, it's kind of cliche, the old crossroads cliche. But it is true, okay? There, you're, we're at a point where, where tough decisions have to be made, a little pain, but then it'll be, it'll be great after you're done with the pain. Or we can kick the can down the road, and you'll be out of office later, I'll be out of office later, and we hand it to a city council five, six, seven years from now.
Not an option.
That's not how we operate, or we've never operated that way.
No.
So the topic of funding these events and the discussion of them is sort of a microcosm of moving forward in the future. And one last thing is, we've lived through it, so have you, over the past, you know, fifteen years, where money for these things was never really an option. Let's give it a chance and go for it. Now things are, we have to be a little bit more judicious. Are there any other comments on the balloon and wine festival topic? Okay, then, Councilmember McCracken, you had some things to say.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to compliment staff on a, on a great job, the presentation. This is my second budget workshop, and I had the privilege and the advantage of being briefed before I come here. The timeframe spent to gather this information from different sources is so overwhelming to the layman that you can't take it in all at once. So I welcome and I challenge and I invite our residents to, whether this is done videotaped or get your hands on it, to sit down and take a real close look at it. We cover some great topics here. We're financially stable now, and there's a deficit coming, and we're looking at ways to, to prevent that deficit. Need residents' participation. So as we sit here as council, going over the budget, looking at different things, and staff did a great job making it tolerable, palatable, if you will. This is something that's so important. I think we should always take this, just take its hands and take a look at it. The service that we're doing, asking for your input, that's important. But just want to cover a couple of things. Since the deficit, we went through the recession, two thousand and eleven, the population has increased, the city service has increased, the response to the city manager has increased. But the city has either reduced their staff or reduced their resources to accommodate that. Efforts have been put in place to keep the city going strong, keep the budget moving. There's been a very conscious, very assertive effort in the past and to present date to keep that standard going. So this buzzer presentation that we're putting on is for the resident to take a look at and be involved in. So I welcome you to do that. We talked about a couple of things. The savings of one seventy-seven or eighty-nine per year per residence for the general fund contribution. So we are a city who has the residents best interested heart, and at the same time, we are a city who has to function based on what society brings to us. So I just want to compliment staff on making this seem like something that's an easy cake walk, and I appreciate and I respect the time and effort put into that. So if this is available, is it videotaped, or is it, how can we get their hands on it?
Yeah, we're, we recorded the audio today, and that will be packaged with the information that we have, and we'll be able to post, upload it into a YouTube or audio file or something to that nature. But this presentation will also be given in two weeks to the city council where it's televised live as well.
For those who have different work schedules or different interest levels, if you will, I think it's something they should be able to get their hands on now, and in the future also, when they do have a chance to sit down and take a look at it, listen to it, discuss it as a family, because it does affect them. So I'd just like that opportunity. So thank you for a good presentation.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Okay, if that's the case, then I'm going to take a motion to adjourn to our closed session and then open session on June fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.